Good evening. I'm Gregory Longini. I'm the Secretary to the Chicago Transit Board. On October 21st, 2021, the Chicago Transit Authority published a notice. Good evening. I'm Gregory Longini. ... held on the evening of Thursday, November 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Call for this public hearing, desiring public comment before it considers an ordinance to adopt the proposed 2022 to 2026 capital program of projects, the 2022 operating budget and program, the proposed fare reductions in the financial plan for 2023 and 2024. Based on the current disaster proclamation issued by Governor Pritzker due to the public health concerns, the head of the CTA has determined it is not practical or prudent to conduct an in-person hearing. This hearing will be livestreamed as is occurring right now. I will now turn this meeting over to Chairman Lester Barclay, the Chairman of the Chicago Transit Board.
Good evening. I am Lester Barclay, Chairman of the Chicago Transit Board. Welcome and thank you for participating in our annual public hearing on the CTA's proposed budget. I would like to introduce the other board members who are present tonight. Alejandro Silva, Kevin Irvine, Reverend Johnny Miller, and Reverend Bernard Jakes. Also in attendance tonight is CTA President Dorval Carter. Before we proceed with the hearing, I want to take a moment to acknowledge this Veterans' Day, the veterans of our country's armed forces, and join in honoring the commitment and sacrifice these brave men and women have made to our country. And I'd especially like to recognize the many veterans who worked for the CTA in a variety of positions. CTA has long promoted the hiring of veterans as we recognize the tremendous value and experience military veterans bring to public transportation. We will now begin the public hearing. Before we open the hearing up to hear from the public, we will first have a brief presentation on the 2022 proposed budget by our Chief Financial Officer, Jeremy Fine. Jeremy?
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening. I'm Jeremy Fine, the CFO for CTA, and I'll give you a brief outline of the 2022 budget. On the first page of the presentation is a highlight of the 2022 operating budget. We're presenting a $1.7 billion budget with diverse revenue streams, but all are highly susceptible to economic factors. Additionally, we have continued to provide full service throughout the pandemic based on the needs of our customers. As such, and due to the essential service nature of public transit, the federal government awarded three packages of federal emergency stimulus funds to offset shortfalls in revenue and cover needed expenses. The third package of the American Rescue Plan, ARP, provided $1.5 billion to the region, and the CTA was allocated $912 million by the RTA last week. The CTA also has the ability to compete for additional emergency relief funds through the ARP discretionary program. The 2022 budget utilizes $456 million of federal relief funds, of which $300 million is from the CHRISA package and $156 is from the aforementioned ARP package. The federal funds have also been integral in allowing us to rebuild our ridership. On the next slide, we have a slide outlining the changing commuting patterns call for revised fare structure. As mentioned, the federal emergency funding has allowed us to pursue policies to induce ridership, and we have piloted fare reductions on certain passes in 2021, and will look to continue and expand these offerings in 2022. We will permanently continue to offer one-, three-, and seven-day passes at the promotional fare. And additionally, we will expand the offering to include the 30-day pass, as well as eliminating the transfer fee unpaid per use. On the next slide, the 22 budget continues to invest in our customers' experience. We are maintaining full service as we have throughout the pandemic based on our customer needs. Implementing additional fare reductions as previously discussed. We'll also be providing for additional security, improving cleanliness and security through the Refresh and Renew Program at 125 rail stations. We continue to focus on pandemic safety measures such as enhancing best-in-class cleaning regimens with new tools such as electrostatic sprayers for vehicles and cleaning SWAT teams. We also will continue to supply hand sanitizer and free masks throughout the system and provide travel healthy kits to the CTA customers. We also are developing a real-time and projected passenger crowding dashboard. On the next slide, we have highlights of the capital improvement program for 2022 through 2026. This program invests $3.5 billion in making major investments throughout the system. We're also very excited about the fact that the new federal infrastructure bill will provide significant additional funding that is not currently in our $3.5 billion CIP. Once funding is allocated, we will amend the CIP to include these new funds. The funding source is supported by the CIP, including federal formula funds, federal discretionary funds, state paygo, and CTA bond funds. The proposed five-year CIP recommends funding for a variety of capital projects and initiatives, which include major rail line projects such as RPM and RLE, All Stations Accessibility Program, the bus and rail fleet modernization, beginning the transformation and transition to electric bus routes, including buses and charging infrastructure, a new control center and training facility, bus priority zones, and state-of-good repair projects throughout the system. Thanks again for your time, and this concludes my remarks, and I'll turn it over to Greg.
Greg, you're on mute.
Thank you, Jeremy. Before we begin, I would like to ask Maggie Garcia, our Spanish interpreter, to say a few words.
Buenas noches. Soy Maggie Garcia, y estoy aquí para ayudarles si necesita ayuda con un intérprete. Yo hablo español y puedo traducir. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Just a few other words before we begin. We're asking all speakers to please limit your comments to three minutes tonight, since we have so many speakers, and we can now begin with our first speaker, who I believe his name is Josh Bajoni. Josh, if you're there, could you please address the board?
Hi, Ian.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Josh Bajoni, and appreciate your time today. I'm a husband, a father of two, an attorney here, and live with my family in the city and use the CTA on a regular basis. I was quite happy when I learned that the CTA committed to electrify its bus fleet by 2040, but I thought that goal was called into serious question when I learned that the 2022 operating budget calls for purchasing only 17 additional electric buses and up to almost 1,300 so-called clean diesel buses. Now, it's 2021, and we know now and have long known that there is no such thing as clean diesel, just as there's no such thing as clean coal. All diesel buses emit nitrogen oxides that form ozone smog, deadly fine particulate matter which affects people living with respiratory issues, and these emissions increase asthma attacks and reduce lung function. Studies have established that asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or COPD, rates were higher among busier CTA bus routes and even higher near CTA bus garages. And we also all know that diesel is a contributor to global warming, which is an existential threat to the future of humanity. So, on the fiscal front, there have been many studies that have demonstrated that electric buses are cheaper in the long term, or that are cheaper long-term investment over the life of the bus because of the fuel and the maintenance savings, especially with the additional incentives in both the states recently enacted Climate and Equitable Jobs Act and the federal infrastructure bill that was referenced earlier. The CTA would be saving money for taxpayers by going electric faster. Now, we have read and seen that the electric bus technology is, remains in its infancy, end quote, as a justification for CTA's planned purchase of these 1,280 diesel buses, but this is simply not an accurate statement. The technology is really far from its infancy. It's rapidly expanding, and market saturation is expected to reach 40% in the next five years. In fact, half the world's buses will be electric by 2025. The technology is evolving, and costs are coming down, and it is certainly not in its infancy. This is not a valid or accurate reason to continue to purchase dirty diesel buses. The transportation sector contributes the largest share of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States, and the CTA really has an opportunity here to be on the right side of history and help Illinois lead the rest of the country in clean public transit.
Thank you, Josh. We need to wrap this pretty soon. Josh, we need to wrap up.
I will. Yep, I wanted to urge the CTA to change course to buy fully-electric vehicles, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Quinn Beaver. If you could address the board, please, sir?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Okay, thanks. My comments are going to be pretty similar to Josh, but I'd just like to start by thanking all of you. You know, I think, when you think of a public transit system, you want it to be accessible, affordable, clean, safe, and efficient, right? And as far as bringing the rates down, that's, you know, kind of the affordability front. As far as bringing, keeping it clean, especially during a pandemic, you know, I think some of the steps that you're taking are great, and I'd like to thank all of you. And, but you know, anytime, and you know, we just had that kind of presentation from the CFO about the capital investment, and anytime you make a capital investment, as you all know, like, that's a big opportunity, right? Anytime you're investing money, that is going to affect how things look for the next, you know, decades, especially when you're talking about buses. And so I would urge, you know, as far as the city, the city's goal is to electrify the bus fleet by 2040. And, you know, I think this is a big opportunity to take some steps towards that. And I would agree with the previous speaker, Josh, that, you know, climate change is an existential threat, and, you know, I love this city. I love Chicago. I'm sure you all do, too, or you wouldn't be where you are right now. And I think, I guess I just want to challenge all of you to think about what you want this city to look like and the pride that we should take in the city itself and also in its public transit system. You know, I was riding my bike the other day behind a bus. Big, black pluma small came, you know, out of the back of the bus, you know, kind of in my face a little bit, and, you know, there's just an opportunity to kind of step away from that for the health of the citizens, for the health of the planet, and for generations to come. And so I know you all want to be good stewards of this city and this planet, and I think we've got an opportunity to do that, and I would urge you to capitalize on that opportunity and to electrify the buses and to make, you know, to continue to make the public transit system not only safe, clean, and affordable, but also good for the planet and healthy for the people that live in the city. So, thank you all. I really appreciate your time, and I really appreciate this opportunity to speak as, you know, as a Chicagoan here and as someone who takes a lot of pride in this, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Great. Very much, Mr. Beaver. Then we'll move to our next speaker. I believe that is Lincoln Cohen. Mr. Cohen, could you please address the board? Mr. Cohen? Is Lincoln Cohen here?
You can press star six. Does that get it? Did that get it?
That gets it, Mr. Cohen. Much your life.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. I am a Chicago resident. I love the city. I use public transportation often. I have six grandkids and one grandson, and I come here tonight to speak for them. You know, and I know, that climate change is not just a danger to their quality of life. It is a danger to their very survival. You know, and I know, that using diesel buses contributes to climate change. You know, and I know, that electric buses will not only sharply reduce your carbon footprint, they are also less expensive over the life of the vehicle than any fossil-fuel-powered bus. If we are to stop cascading climate disasters, no city, especially not one the size of Chicago, can afford to buy diesel buses ever again. Please don't do it. All of our kids and grandkids are depending on you. Now is the time to go electric. Now. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for addressing the board. We appreciate it. And I believe that our next speaker is Ms. Cynthia Litten. Ms. Litten? Cynthia Litten? Are you there?
Hello. My name is Cynthia Linton, and I live in the Streeterville neighborhood. One of the advantages of living where I do is I can walk or take the bus just about anywhere I want to go. And I like to get out, remove my mask, and walk both for the exercise and fresh air. But I'm concerned about the poor air quality in Chicago and often wonder if I'd be better off keeping my mask on. As I move around the city, I'm aware of the pollution coming from cars, trucks, especially buses. I long for the day when they will all be electric and our air will be clean and healthy. The city has pledged to have only electric buses by 2040, but now the CTA is planning to buy up to 1,200 diesel buses over the next five years. Why? They will just contribute to more pollution for us to inhale and more greenhouse gas emissions to warm the planet and disrupt our climate. I fear I will never see the clean air future I envisioned. I'm reminded of a story about a heavy drinker who went to see his doctor, and the doc said his liver was in terrible shape, and he needed to stop drinking before he did more damage. The man said, "I'll stop drinking in 2040." "That's too late," the doctor said. "You'll be too sick by then. You may not even be alive." Well, the patient said, "It's just too hard to make a big lifestyle change right away all at once." I pledged to quit, didn't I? How about a little praise for that? I asked the CTA, "Please don't add more diesel buses to your fleet." "Time to go electric is now." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Litten. Our next speaker is Brian Urbizuski. Brian, are you there, and can you address the board? Brian? Is Brian the next one on our list? Staff?
Brian, press star six to unmute your line.
Brian?
Can anybody hear me?
Now we can, Brian. Yes, please, we can hear you now. Please address the board. Thanks.
Sorry about that. My name is Brian Urbizuski, and I'm the Director of Environmental Health Programs at Respiratory Health Association. My organization's mission is to prevent lung disease, promote clean air, and help people live better through education, research, and policy change. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. RHA is a long-term supporter of transit. Why? It can move people efficiently, keep cars off the road, lessen congestion, and minimize air pollution. We've also pushed to be, the CTA to be as clean as it can be because it serves vulnerable communities disproportionately harmed by air pollution. We pushed for particulate filters on 600 buses, worked to move Volkswagen settlement funds to electric buses, supported CTA federal electric bus requests, and pushed electric bus funding in the state SEJA legislation. But last year, RHA partnered with University of Chicago's Center for Spatial Data Science to examine the nexus between CTA bus routes and chronic lung disease. Final published report showed that asthma and COPD rates were higher along CTA's busier routes than the city average. Those rates were even higher near CTA garages. That doesn't mean CTA buses are causing that entire situation, but it shows that there would be disproportionate health benefits in getting zero-emission electric buses on those routes and in those garages. It would eliminate harmful diesel emissions in densely populated quarters precisely where the highest proportion of sick people live and breathe. The proposed CTA budget is disappointing. Commitment to purchase only one electric bus for every 18 diesel buses CTA says it needs to be buying is a little shocking. Continuing to purchase diesel buses will only add to air pollution and accelerate global warming. CTA is using 20-year-old buses today. Purchasing diesel buses now and over the next five years will surely ensure that CTA will not meet the goal of electrifying the bus fleet by 2040, a goal that has been articulated by the former and current mayor, the city council, and CTA itself. We've also been waiting two and a half years for the CTA to produce a bus electrification plan. That plan needs to be released. Fact that $39 billion in new federal funds for transit, including bus electrification, are now being made available highlights that such a plan is long overdue. CTA needs to articulate and advocate for additional competitive federal grant funding quickly for bus electrification. We fear the CTA is faltering in its commitment. This budget diverts from the path of achieving 100% electric, zero-emission bus fleet by 2040, and we hope that CTA can fix this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Brian. To continue, I've lost my screen. I believe our person to speak is Karen Dieter.
Karen, you can press star six to unmute your line.
I got the instruction to unmute, but I'm not Karen Dieter.
You must be Scott Reed?
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott Reed, I'm sorry.
My apologies, Karen. I thank you, Chairman and board members, for having this hearing. My name is Scott Reed, and I live in Galewood, which is a little neighborhood near Austin. I mostly ride the North Avenue bus. So my story starts in the early to mid-1990s, when I was waiting at a bus stop to commute home. It was a hot day. A bus pulled up, but it wasn't mine. And I was positioned at the stop, so the back of the bus, where the engine is, was pretty close to me, and it was like standing next to a furnace or a pizza oven. Now, I had recently heard this term "global warming", and standing there, in my brilliance, I concluded that it must be the heat radiating from all the buses and cars and jets and so forth that was heating the planet. And this was the beginning of my personal evolution towards understanding the term "global warming". I was concerned, but that's about it. In 2000, I changed careers, became a teacher in Chicago Public High School, and in 2007 started showing my class as Al Gore's famous movie, "An Inconvenient Truth". After seeing the movie over 40 times during the next 10 or so years, I learned it wasn't the heat from the buses and cars causing global warming, but the gases from their exhaust, called greenhouse gases, that were obstructing the Earth's natural cooling-off process. And I also learned that the buildup of these gases was gaining a momentum that had dire implications for everything alive on our planet. And this is more than my brain could digest, and, but I was more informed, but not fully informed, about global warming. Then I retired, and last year I completed a training program about our heating planet, and now I consider myself, at minimum, well-informed about our predicament. So, here's the deal. Not about me. Getting a grasp on the climate crisis might not happen overnight, but when the situation is fully realized, you realize you can choose actions that improve our predicament or you can choose actions that worsen our predicament, but there's no actions you have available to choose in the middle. Because when you have a full grasp of the situation, you realize choosing actions that address the problem are not just admirable, they're moral. But actions that continue the problem are not moral. It's gotten that bad. All people have a right to be protected from pollution. All people have a right to start a family without dreading their kids will grow up into a dystopian nightmare. So, please, please do the very hard work for us and take actions that remediate the problem. Buy more electric buses instead of diesel. Thank you again for your attention to my comment.
Yes. Our next speaker will be Karen. It'll be Karen Dieter. Karen?
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Oh, good. Sorry, my phone wouldn't unmute. Hi, my name is Karen Dieter, and I'm a psychotherapist and educator in Chicago. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to our concerns on such important issues as clean energy and positioning our CTA in Chicago to be the model city we all aspire to be. As you know, children learn through example, and this is one of the reasons why it is so critically important that the city shift to electric buses as soon as possible. The choices we make today will be the examples given to our children and citizens for the next 10 to 20 years. Research and economics are clear about how important it is to have carbon-neutral modes of transportation. The current plan has 18 diesel buses for every electric bus. We all know that clean diesel isn't really clean energy. Others have spoken about the health and environmental impact of diesel energy. But what does it say about our city to decide to purchase 1,280 new diesel buses instead of modeling clean energy and shifting more quickly to electric vehicles? Having electric buses as a cornerstone of our CTA will model a commitment to action in the face of climate change and will move our city into the forefront of the future. As importantly in my eyes, the choice to go electric will model for children the use of electric vehicles as the wise and safe choice for the future. They are learning from us. What is it that we want them to know? Please teach them the importance of acting to protect their home and environment by bolder and more future-oriented choices and shifting the CTA to electric buses now. Thank you all for your time and for listening.
Hello?
The next speaker will be Michael Overstreet.
Yes. Hey, good evening. My name is Michael Overstreet, a resident of the City of Chicago as well as an employee of Local 308. The budget has been released, the budget, proposed budget, from the CTA Transit Authority. I'm hurt to hear that in terms of frontline employees, there are no planned raises for frontline employees who have been here throughout the pandemic. Also, quality of life for frontline employees, being forced to stay, being forced to stay at work, as well as, as well as, as well as no end in sight as far as security concerns and our safety. Numbers are low in regards to safety on the trains and buses. And as a testimony, it's probably because a lot of stuff does not get reported. We deal with numerous threats, altercations, all kinds of violence every day. And a lot of times it goes unheard, it doesn't get addressed, things like that. At night homelessness is an issue. Trains pretty much become a mobile shelter. And that's about all I got. Thank you for your time, frontline employees. That's my issue. Thank you.
Mr. Overstreet, thank you very much for addressing the board. We appreciate it. And our next speaker will be Keith Kaisel. Keith, please address the board. Keith? Keith, can you address the board, please?
Okay, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, Keith.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir. Please address.
How you doing?
We're doing great.
Yeah. How you doing? Keith Kaisel from, retired operator, bus operator from local 241. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come in. So let me drop real fast what I want to say. One is a recommendation I gave a few years ago. I'm going to thank you for lowering the bus fare. But I had proposed a while back a 12-hour bus, a 12-hour pass for $5, which can eliminate the passes being passed to other people who don't pay. Because most people won't be on the bus more than 12 hours a day, so that would eliminate passing the pass to somebody else to go back to work when they get home and therefore increase more revenue for the CTA. So I'd like for them to at least to try to visit the 12-hour pass to decrease improper use of pass. Also, I like the fact that you put in electric buses. And like I said, they need to get more out there sooner. But also, they also need to worry about former coworkers' safety. I proposed a years ago, at least have some cameras at the end of the line at the terminals, which is probably a very unsafe place to be at 2:00 in the morning with a bus. Also, they maybe they need to have the bus driver like they do in South Africa. And the shield's originally my idea, but that's not what they really needed. A complete enclosure of the operator with a separate door on future buses like they do in South Africa to keep the operator safe from any type of attack or stealing, something spilling on them. Or even like a Brazil and Rio de Janeiro, a gate that you can't even get on the bus unless you pay. Like I send pictures to you to find it, how they do it in Brazil. These are the things that can probably make it safe, more safe for the operator as well. So they don't want to say, you know, we have to make sure to protect the drivers. Spending all this money on buses, which you need to protect the people who are driving the buses. Get some cameras at the end of the line, protect them in their seats. And also, I know by my last few seconds, if possible, just maybe way out, way down the line, but if you could connect the orange line from midway straight to O'Hare without having to get off, that would be a nice thing to look into in the future. That's it.
Greg, you're muted.
All right, thank you, Keith, for concluding your remarks. Our next speaker will be Charles Paydock. Charles?
Hello, am I on?
Yeah, you're on, Charles. Please address the board. Thanks.
Okay, my name is Charles Paydock, Secretary of Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders, resident of Bridgeport with an office in a loop I commute to. My comments will be eclectic. First of all, I want to compliment the board, the operators, and the support staff for maintaining service at full level during the crisis of the pandemic, unlike PACE, which implemented severe and unnecessary cuts of 62% in service. I deeply appreciate the adoption of best industry practices regarding deep cleaning of vehicles, 300 vehicles on a daily basis. Our research indicates that you have less than a 5% chance of getting COVID by being a passenger on public transit. I would also like to compliment the administrative staff on this year's budget book, which is very informative. Our particular concern as an organization is that the number of revenue miles and the number of hours of operation appear to be going to remain essentially the same, with no decrease in service, as indicated in page 48. We appreciate that. We are particularly concerned about two projects, however. One is the Bus Vision Study, and the other one is the Real-Time and Projected Passenger Crowding Project. In the past, these scheduled studies have resulted in cuts in service, and we hope that does not result as a result of these activities, as indicated on pages 13 and 15. Regarding the contract security guards, we're pleased to see that crime has declined by 25%. However, we recommend the conversion to in-house personnel to perform security services. Contracting out is not recommended. Is that it?
No, you've got another minute, Charles.
Oh, okay. The shortfall of $386 million is of concern. However, we hope that the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan and other sources of federal funding and state funding, such as Rebuild Illinois, make up for the difference. The readiness and recovery ratio indicated on page 37 doesn't look to be of any immediate concern this year, which is positive. We appreciate the $3.5 billion, the improvement plan, capital improvement plan, to keep the system in a state of good repairs in the beginning on page 51. The fleet of buses, 75% of the buses, are at least their life expectancy, so we would appreciate actions taken towards their replacement.
Thank you very much, Charles, for your comments. We appreciate them very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nice to hear from you.
Same here, script.
Okay. Our next speaker will be David Tegeman, if I pronounced that correctly. Mr. Tegeman, could you address the board, please?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can, sir. Go right ahead.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. My name is David Tegeman, and I'm a member of the East Garfield Park community here on the west side of Chicago. And I'm coming to you from a community whose air and water have been poisoned for decades by fossil fuels. Yet, the CTA's budget calls for new diesel buses to continue hurting communities like mine all over Chicago. I don't own a car, so I rely entirely on the CTA to get to work in the doctor's office and around town. So I really appreciate how the CTA allows me to live without a car in this great city. And that's why I'm calling on the CTA to do better for our communities, for our city, and our planet. Right now, the CTA plans to purchase just 70 electric buses in the next five years, and at the same time, 1,280 diesel buses. This is what climate denial looks like. We have the capacity and the need for clean electric buses in every part of the city, but the CTA wants to double down on dirty fossil fuels. Don't let the fossil fuel industry's propaganda fool you. There's no such thing as clean diesel. It's just another fossil fuel destroying our community's air and destroying our planet. We can't wait until 2040 for CTA to get serious about electric buses and the climate crisis. CTA needs to get moving now on these issues with this budget in front of you. It's time for this board to reject climate denialism, reject the fossil fuel lobby, and reject pollution in frontline communities like mine. Please reject any deal for more diesel buses. And let's get started on a 100% electric fleet today with this budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tegeman, for addressing the board. Our next speaker is Ms. Maria Acosta. Ms. Acosta, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Great. Good evening. My name is Maria.
Please continue.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Great, wonderful. My name is Maria Acosta. I'm a resident of the 11th Ward, an Arden public transportation user. I am also a committee member of the Illinois Poor People's Campaign, a national call for more revival. I am speaking to you today in solidarity with a number of groups, some that you've already heard of, as well as the Sierra Club Illinois, the Sunrise Movement Chicago, the Stop General Iron Campaign, the Illinois Environmental Council, the People's Response Network, as well as the poor and working poor and the low-income and disenfranchised folks to demand that this, that the president of the CTA, as well as this board, table this proposal until the revision actually reflects not just this bus fleet electrification study that everyone's been waiting on, that's been promised, but that's actually committed to the health and well-being of all Chicagoans. We've already heard about the need to increase electrical buses. The title of this proposal is quite apropos, returning to normal rather than elevating, rather than being resourceful, rather than getting better. Everything in here of these addition of diesel buses, it really fails to meet and prioritize climate resilience, environmental sustainability, and really the energy-efficient goals of not just the mayor of this city, but the governor of this state and the president, who we have just fought to pass this infrastructure bill. So it's almost as though CTA hasn't been living in the same reality as the rest of us. We're not just dealing with this respiratory, vascular pandemic, that's COVID-19, and the aggravating forces of global warming and climate change. You're essentially continuing to exploit the poor, the working, the low-income Chicagoans, and it just has to stop. You know, it doesn't matter. We know that diesel is a carcinogenic. It's unacceptable health threat. So I feel that you're really committed to real equity, and it was purported by a paper written for the Transportation Research Board. I think it needs to include that, just the electric bus increase, but it also needs to show that you are actually committed to doing a public good for the safety of your employees and not commodifying this. You have to be recognized. Do you not believe in Chicago as a world-class city and we have world-class resources? You have here that you're funding an Office of Innovation, Equity, and Diversity. All of these are actually already fulfilled by your infrastructure, strategy, data, and technology and planning department. You're literally funding other things. I advise you to harness the power of the resources, both in the research, analytics, and human capital of our local institutions. You need to fully participate in the security of this nation. It's also not just about health, but it's security. We must get off of using fossil fuels and really join in electrifying transit.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta, for your comments. We appreciate them very much. And we will now move on to our next speaker, who is Mr. Harold Dennis. Mr. Dennis, are you there? And can you hear us? Mr. Dennis?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Please keep going.
All right. Good evening, everyone at the board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Harold Dennis. I am a former CTA employee as well as a member of the Sierra Club. I'd like to start off by reading from a letter published in 2010 that states that CTA was fully committed to not only electrifying its fleet, but diversifying its fleet and providing more eco-friendly vehicles in 2010. It says that "We are always exploring ways to make the CTA more energy efficient. It is crucial for our operations as we continue to find ways to minimize costs. It's always had a positive impact on the environment," says CTA Board Chairman Terry Peterson. "The CTA is committed to sustainability initiatives and working to identify appropriate means of rebuilding." "Most people know that taking public transportation is cost-effective and good for the environment," says CTA President Richard L. Rodriguez in 2010. "However, the CTA strives to make environmentally friendly decisions whenever possible." "The CTA does more than just operate energy-efficient buses." "The webpage has highlighted other agency initiatives of recycling things like engine oil, antifreeze, and other efforts that decreases environmental impact on rail stations, offices, and maintenance facilities." "There was also even an in-house green team dedicated to advancing green initiatives in the CTA and identifying potential funding for these projects." "Where's the green team when you need them, and what do they have to say about" "the lackluster performance of only purchasing a small amount of electric fleet vehicles?" "This is a travesty to the city of Chicago, and I urge the board to have more public forums to allow the city commuters to voice their concerns about this small amount of purchase and the reinvestment of diesel buses." "As we know, diesel has harmful effects to human health and the environment. Exposure to diesel exhaust can lead to serious health conditions like asthma, respiratory illness, and can worsen existing heart and lung diseases, especially in children and the elderly. These conditions can result in increased numbers of emergency room visits, hospital admissions, absences from work and school, and premature deaths."
Thank you, Mr. Dennis, for your comments. We appreciate them. We will now move on to our next speaker, who is Christian Dawson. Mr. Dawson, are you there? And can you hear us? Mr. Dawson? Mr. Dawson? I see your line there, Mr. Dawson. Can you hear us? Yes, sir?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Please continue. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, my name is Christian Dawson. I grew up in the suburbs of Chicago, and I've been living in the city limits for about six years now. I take public transit to work almost every day, and it's really one of the highlights of this city and something that I'm very proud of to have grown up around and been able to take advantage of. And I think that as an example for the rest of the country, we need to be focusing on the future of public transport. Part of that public transport future is focusing on electric buses, but it's also increasing safety for all of our commuters and operators that have worked so hard in the last, I mean, for the last decades, but even more so in the last two years with the ongoing restrictions and pandemic that we've been going through. And I think one thing that I've been hearing a lot on this call is safety in general. So I was coming on here to just talk about electrifying our buses, but I think that a focus on safety overall should be a theme within this budget. The focus on electric buses and clean air for our entire city is very important, and I think can also tie into building safer, an electric bus could be built to be safer for our frontline workers so that they feel more comfortable going to work and are more comfortable interacting with all of our citizens that use the bus system. I think that, oops, is that my time, or? Oh, okay. Yeah, I've been using the bus my, almost my whole life, and I really appreciate having this system here. And I just wanted to thank you guys and also thank, or thank you guys for letting me speak. And then also thank all of those workers that have been working through this pandemic and making sure that I can also get to work. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson, for those very kind comments. We appreciate them. Our next speaker will be Mr. Mac Dressman. Mr. Dressman? Are you there? Mr. Dressman?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Please address the board.
Great. Well, hello, and thank you so much for having me. My name is Mac Dressman, and I'm an associate with grassroots public interest advocacy group, PERG, as well as a Chicago resident who uses public transit every day. I urge the CTA to increase its investments in zero-emission electric buses to protect the public's health and address climate change. As Chicago already knows, continuing to rely on fossil fuel-powered vehicles threatens our health and the climate. Traffic-related air pollution kills an estimated 58,000 Americans every year, and transportation is the single largest contributor to climate change in the United States. And that's why transitioning to clean electric vehicles is so important. And that's why transitioning to clean electric vehicles is so important. Electric buses aren't just good for public health and the planet. They're also a smart investment for transit agencies over the long term due to reduced maintenance and fuel costs. Chicago already rolled out two electric buses in 2014. According to CTA's own 2018 news release, the vehicles performed well, have had no difficulty with extreme temperatures, and saved the CTA more than $24,000 each year in fuel costs and $30,000 each year in maintenance costs. Since then, electric bus technology and availability has increased. The CTA committed to building an 100% electric bus system by 2040, but the 2022 budget and its spending plan for the next five years shows little progress in getting clean, zero-emission buses on the streets. Instead, CTA says it's going to buy at least 600 more 100% new diesel buses, as many as 1,280 diesel buses in the next four years, but only plans to buy 70 more zero-emission electric buses. These investments fall short of both what is necessary and what is possible. Earlier this fall, Austin, Texas, approved the purchase of 197 new electric buses over the next five years. In comparison, the CTA plans to only buy 70 more zero-emission electric buses over the next four years. That's less than half of Austin's investments. If a city in Texas with a fraction of our population can commit to clean air, why can't Chicago? With all that in mind, I urge the CTA to purchase more electric buses and fulfill its promise to electrify the entire transit fleet by 2040. As an Uptown resident who relies on the city's public bus system to get around the city every day, I'm sick of breathing toxic diesel fumes every time I leave my apartment. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you too.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dressman. We appreciate them. Our next speaker is Mario Fornarelli. Mario, are you there?
Hi, my name is Mario Fornarelli. I'm a resident by the O'Hare area, and I'm just asking the board if they can invest into electric buses. There was, uh, in Urbana-Champaign, there's a bus company called M... oh, transit, I mean, a transit company called MTD. And they just, uh, just announced, like, their operation of their hydrogen fuel cell electric bus powered by the sun, by solar power. And so that means that the solar is making hydrogen greenly because hydrogen, you know, like, most of hydrogen is made in the United States mostly by fossil fuels. But because of the incentives from the Climate Act that was just passed in September, we could actually move faster with renewables now and make green hydrogen, which is made from renewables. And also because the infrastructure bill has a lot of incentives for green hydrogen. Then, um, in the infrastructure bill, it's saying that they could reduce the cost of green hydrogen by 2025 to three kilograms or three kilograms of hydrogen. And if you guys need to, like, see how their fleet works, like, you could also, like, contact MDT in Urbana-Champaign. And the nice thing about hydrogen fuel cell electric, it's about 10 minutes to refuel. And, um, also, like, it doesn't, the battery, I mean, the range doesn't get reduced from cold climate, from, like, cold weather. The range actually does not get affected by extreme temperatures. So that's like a positive thing about hydrogen fuel cell electric and has longer range. But I want, like, if you guys can invest more into hydrogen fuel cell electric and battery electric. Because if you have more, like, longer routes, you can use hydrogen fuel cell electric. And for the shorter routes, you can use battery electric buses. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fornarelli, for addressing the board. We appreciate it. Our next speaker... Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be David Dalca.
Good evening. My name is David Dalca. I live in Jefferson Park. Many people may not be aware, but the O'Hare Blue Line Station is still not open 24/7/365 as it was before the pandemic. As the pandemic is ending, and I intend to travel more in 2022, I seek to have this 24/7/365 service restored to the O'Hare Blue Line Station. I also have a friend that had to turn down a job offer at O'Hare because he needed to arrive there at 2:00 AM, and there's no way for him to do that because he doesn't have a car. I asked the board to take immediate action to restore full 24/7/365 service to the O'Hare Blue Line Station. Many people tonight have discussed safety. There's also an issue of reduced ridership due to COVID and fears about COVID. I'd like the board to explore a temporary fare reduction to 150 for the next year. This fare cut would increase ridership, which would improve safety due to the numbers, increased numbers of people on the trains. It would also reduce car traffic, which is becoming unbearable across the city, which would improve bus-on-time rates. Recently, I spoke about the conditions at the Blue Line Station. I appreciate your efforts to start the process of improving that. There is still a long way to go. I still have not heard from the Blue Line manager. The stop sign and crosswalks have not been replaced and repainted. The rats and overflowing garbages have not been done. And I'd like the CTA, ACE, and Metro to meet jointly to discuss funding full-time security guards, especially in the evenings from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM, perhaps all night, at the Jefferson Park Station. It is, Jefferson Park Station is the largest facility in the entire system that does not have any permanent security guards the way that the Metro stations do downtown or other major CTA facilities do. An additional thing I'd like to see happen is I'd like you guys to create a zero-tolerance policy for fare jumpers. The fare jumpers are what cause these problems at these other stations. And, you know, I think the fare reduction would help that, but I also think increased security, increased fines and prosecution for jumping fares is a long-term solution to this problem. Lastly, I'd like to respond to all the people that are with good intentions regarding electric buses. I'd like to know where they expect all this electricity to come from. ComEd's grid is already overwhelmed, and I would like there to be an intensive study of the fare, what it would cost, and make sure that the residential ComEd bills would stay the same. We already have this problem with electric cars that doesn't have enough grid there, and I ask people to take a more progressive look at this problem before taking action.
Thank you, David. We need to wrap up. Thank you. And then we have another speaker, who I do not know the name, so if you could please tell us who you are and begin addressing the board.
I'm not sure if I'm the person you're referring to, but my name is Pamela Tate.
Oh, yes, Pamela. Yes, you are. Thank you very much. Yes, please address the board.
Okay. My name is Pam Tate. I'm representing the Climate Reality Project, their Chicago Metro chapter. And I'm just going to depart from the prepared remarks because many people have made these points about electric buses. But I do have to say that I've been working for the last year and a half with the PACE bus system in the suburbs, trying to get them to, as I put it to them, make the same commitment that CTA made. And they finally have agreed to go totally electric by 2040, and they agreed to buy no more diesel buses. And that was a wonderful decision on their part. And then I read your budget, and I see that you're going to potentially purchase up to 1,280 diesel buses in the next several years. And I have to tell you, I was totally shocked to see that because I thought the CTA was going to be taking the lead and PACE was going to be far behind. As people have said, there's no such thing as clean diesel. They all emit the nitrogen oxide, and they all pollute and cause lung respiratory problems. I mean, we all know that. You know that. And with global warming and the longer heat waves we're going to have in Chicago, because we have heat islands here and the hotter temperatures will lead to more summer ozone smog, and people are going to have more issues with increasing pollution that are going to be caused by your buses. So I said to myself, well, I thought they were going to be a leader, and here they are, making this other decision. Why are they doing this? Why could they possibly be doing this? So I came to the conclusion that it had to be because you thought that diesel buses were cheaper as a short-term solution, that they would cost you less. And I just, when you, it is the case. I think somebody said that, that when you factor in the fuel and maintenance costs of a diesel bus and the social and environmental costs that have already been talked about, actually, they are more expensive because over the lifetime of an electric bus, there's savings of probably $475,000 to $80,000 in fuel and maintenance alone with an electric bus. So yes, it costs more upfront. The capital cost is greater. But with all the new funding that's available, I can't imagine that you couldn't see your way to flipping this and planning to buy 1,280 electric buses over the next four or five years. I, it's got to be the money because it can't be, it can't be anything else. The technology is not in its infancy. It is rapidly expanding. The costs are coming down 10% to 15% a year.
Thank you very much.
That'd be your reason. So I just would urge you to take a new look at why you've made this plan, what is the information you were relying on, and look at it again. Change course here.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much, Ms. Tate. We appreciate them. There are no further requests to speak from our engineers. And so, Chairman Barkley, there's nobody else waiting to talk to the board?
Thank you. Since there are no further speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you all for participating.
Thank you, Chairman. The public hearing is finished. Thank you.